Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today, Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us this evening. It's a pretty big agenda we have this evening. I wanted to go ahead and start off with the first item. Any general comments from the council?
I do have one thing that I wanted to discuss. Over the past couple of days, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the Virginia Intermont College campus. I've had a lot of folks in the community reach out to me, and I've been in discussion with some board members, with the college president, with members of the community. And I will say that the city is limited in what we can do in regards to the Intermont campus, but we will do whatever we can to apply pressure if needed to get some movement on the campus and address its condition because it's a very sentimental place in the hearts of a lot of people in the city. And when you're coming into downtown, it's one of the first things you're going to see if you're coming off the interstate. So we'd like to address it, and we'd like to help in any way we can.
Any other comments from the rest of the council? The next item is city manager comments. And Mr. City Manager, can you hear us on the phone tonight?
Yeah, I can hear y'all just fine. I appreciate you all letting me call in tonight. I don't have any comments.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to matters to be presented by members of the public. These are non-agenda items. For non-agenda items, let's take a look here real quick. The first person to sign up is Mr. Danny Christian.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm still here. Nothing's happened. I can't get no help. Look, 2008, July, Chad Osborne, man who works for you, or did, come into my house with the police like thugs. Give us two hours to get out of our home. I'm 53 years old at the time. Two hours to get out, right in the middle of COVID. I get the shirt off my back. They rushed my wife. Her son's eight weeks old that day. She got 17 weeks of bed rest that day. They let somebody else come in and take our stuff. I had two hours to get what I could get, find a home for my dog, get what I could get, and get out. I have witnesses. I can prove it. My witnesses are police officers and VSS agents who were there. We were forced to stand there and watch. Somebody else that we don't even know take everything we owned. Vehicle, camper, car, everything. I got the shirt off my back, and it was dirty because I worked at work that day. Now, here it is, whatever today's date is, I'm still homeless. I want my son back. I can't do that without some help. Mr. Mayor don't want to talk to me. I left him message after message. I know at least one of you guys up there know me, know me all my whole entire life. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't true. And guys, I need some help, and it stops right here with you guys. Randy Eads, the city manager, city attorney, great attorney. OJ be proud to have him on his team. City manager, when I needed a city manager, my family needed a city manager, we got the city attorney. Still getting a city attorney, yet to see a city manager. Now, that's not right. What happened to us and what was done to us by Chad Osborne, I'm sorry if he didn't kill any of you up there. I apologize. Because they had a vendetta against my landlady. When I call him thinking he's going to come and stop this tragedy, he tells me, let it play out. My boss wants Mr. Maxwell bad. Who was his boss? My landlady never done nothing to me but take my money. I was living in a five-bedroom home. I'm supposed to be figuring out, supposed to be married and figuring out what elementary school I want my son to go to. Instead, I've not seen him or talked to him in a year. My sixth child, my first four graduated high school, no problems. I went military, Air Force, Army, career. My fifth daughter, got a four-year ride to MTSU or her academics. Why am I not raising my son? Because I can't get a place to live, because I can't get a job, because I can't get a social security card. You took everything. They took everything I had, everything. Go home, let somebody be waiting for you, put you out of your house in two hours. Of course, you just, police that I called forced me to stand there and watch them and take my stuff. It's not right. Not right at all. Folks, I need some help, and it starts with you guys. You're the city council. Buck Inns here with you guys. I've never sued nobody in my life. Don't want to sue nobody. But what the city did to my family now is wrong. Somebody needs to help us.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. We'll put our heads together and try to discuss. Thank you.
Mr. Christian, I'd like to meet you after this meeting tonight if you will hang out.
The next person that signed up for public comment for a non-agenda item is Mr. Joel Kellogg.
I apologize for my staples. Joel Kellogg, Hope for Bristol, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. So, good evening, council. So you all know by now, I like to bring this stuff. So today I brought you a copy. Hopefully, you know, I hope one day it's donuts I can bring y'all. I really do. So I'm bringing you a copy tonight of a warning letter issued by Virginia DEQ. Day of May 3, 2022. This letter is a result of an unannounced visit by DEQ to your landfill. I bring this as I'm unsure how much of this information you actually receive. So I want to talk about the content of this letter and the reason it's important to your residents. The visit was a result of DEQ receiving 36 emission complaints, along with the city of Bristol, Virginia, receiving approximately 58 emission complaints between April 18th and April 21st. It was disturbing to read that DEQ representatives found large areas of your landfill lacking any sort of cover. In fact, they did not even find any cover material available for use. So this is a regulation that your landfill is legally bound to follow. Regulation 9 VAC 20-81-140.B.1.C. states daily cover consisting of at least six inches of compacted soil or other approved materials should be placed upon and maintained in all exposed solid ways at the end of each operating day or at more frequent intervals if necessary. This is to control disease, vectors, fire, odors, emissions, blowing litter, and scavenging. Alternate materials of an alternate thickness may be approved by the department if it has been demonstrated that the material, the alternate material and thickness controls disease vectors, fires, odors, blowing litter, and scavenging without presenting a threat to human health and environment. At least three days of acceptable cover soil or approved material at the average usage rate should be maintained at the landfill or readily available at all times. So daily cover, to me, means covers to be applied each day, right? Does that make sense? Do you think it's acceptable to just simply not adhere to this regulation? To just leave these large areas exposed when we're choking on this stuff all night? So I don't understand. You got $23 million for a new school, but you can't buy dirt. This continues to not make sense to me. So tonight, I implore you once again to finally admit this is a failed venture and cease intake immediately. It becomes more obvious with each new notice of violation and warning that this city is incapable of operating your landfill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Sam Weddington.
Sam Weddington, Senior Pastor, First Presbyterian, Bristol, Tennessee, minister, member of the Bristol Area Ministerial Alliance. And first of all, I do want to thank you, members of council who I've had contact with. You all received the letter from us, hoping that we can find a positive way forward to enact recommendation 10 from VDEC, and we look forward to that. And as we've sort of been strategizing about next steps in terms of communicating with the community and sort of trying to get our heads around this report, I actually have found myself having a bit of sympathy for you and your plight. It's, we finally have a roadmap, but it's sort of like a roadmap to Summit Everest. And I get that. It can be daunting, and you don't really know what is the first step to take. And so the request is simply this, what we, reiterating what we had in the letter, and I know that we're going to move in that direction. The first step is that solid communication piece, just clearly outlining for the community the challenges that you're facing, the steps you hope to take, and part of those challenges include the finances. You know, Bristol, Virginia cannot finance this by itself in a reasonable period of time that doesn't lead to more exacerbation of the project, of the problem. So I do want to request that and look forward to hopefully some positive steps that we can take as a community to shore up that communication gap and, I guess, increase community interaction as well as interaction with lawmakers and the Commonwealth. I think that's going to be critical. I know you all have probably already been doing that. And the other thing that I want to request that you consider if you haven't done it yet is please, please begin reaching out to VDEC's Department of Environmental Justice. There is funding there for direct remediation in terms of impacts on the community, direct relief steps that you can take that, for example, I or Bama or anybody else, we can't apply for those funds, but the city could ask for some help with VDEC's Department of Environmental Justice. Also, the possibility of funding with the EPA. Again, it's not an easy path, but there are partnerships that you could forge with other nonprofits that could lead to positive steps and some temporary relief for residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weddington. The next person that signed up for a non-agenda item is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 140 Ashley Drive. I would like to express my appreciation for Vice Mayor Osborne with his pursuing a solution to the best of his ability concerning the previous VI campus. We have seen that property go downhill. Unfortunately, there are other examples of city and other properties in the city that have also gone downhill, and we need solutions. In some cases, it's not entirely clear whose responsibility some of those are. So it may not always be a straightforward solution, but I appreciate the pursuit of solutions at the VI campus, at some of the local cemeteries, and other places where there's tall grass, there are syringes in the grass. In some cases, things have been made worse rather than better by trying to evict the homeless, the local homeless population, where they then just have to find some other place to go. So that's not a solution in and of itself, though I understand some of the reasons behind some of those actions. And I just want to express my appreciation for anything the city can do and for Mr. Osborne's attempts in making sure that something gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. That's the last person that signed up for a non-agenda item. So now we'll move into the adoption of our regular agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the following changes. Under regular agenda, I would like to add an item two for a budget discussion before we do our first reading. And under the consent agenda, I would like to pull out item three, which is the appointment to the Regional Improvement Commission and consider it as its own separate item.
Okay.
And that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion for that. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to adopt the agenda with the following changes, as stated by Mr. Osborne. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naif.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
The first item of our regular agenda, a proclamation to proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Park Day. And we had one person that signed up for public comment for this item, and that is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 140 Ashley Drive. I very much like supporting, encouraging people to enjoy our local wilderness areas, parks, trails, and I think that this proclamation is a great idea. I sent an email to the city manager and yourself making a recommendation that perhaps this could be followed through with city action to suspend fees for entrance to the park for the day. In the past, I've made recommendations that perhaps all entrance fees to the park could be eliminated. And Mr. Lamy said that the fees are relatively minimal as it is, which would suggest to me that perhaps there'd be little loss in eliminating those. Of course, that's a budget concern. That would have to be discussed, pros and cons. But if the fees are so minimal, perhaps it would be fairly simple to eliminate the fees for that one day. That way, the kids can enjoy the full range of features at Sugar Hollow Park. There are a lot of trails that are past the toll area. There's the campground. There are all of the dining areas. There's a lot of areas that would otherwise require a fee. And if only for the day, just to encourage kids to get out and enjoy nature for a day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. We'll move on to staff report. Mr. Eads, can you hear us okay?
I'm sorry, folks, I was on mute. This is a proclamation to proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Parks Day. Kids to Parks Day is an annual day of outdoor exploration at local, state, and national parks and public lands across the country. The goal of the National Park Trust is to encourage families and kids to get outdoors and build appreciation for their local parks. In regards to Mr. Pollard's comments, we have followed up with our Parks and Recreation Department. The children usually stay in the playgrounds, picnic areas, trails, dog parks, the dam area, the fields, the sports fields, hiking trails, and the disc golf course. The only area of the park that charges a fee is the shelter area and the overnight campground area, and that is $1 per carload per day. And Mr. Pollard was provided that information this afternoon.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Eads. I'll go ahead and I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation proclaiming May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Park Day in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Whereas, May 21st, 2022 is the 12th Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypocholesterol. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now, therefore, the City Council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, does hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Park Day, adopted this day, the 10th of May, 2022. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naif.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
The next item of our agenda is item number two that was added when we adopted the agenda, a discussion of the budget. And we'll start with a staff report, if, Mr. Eads, if you have anything.
Yes, council. As everyone knows, tonight is the first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year '22, '23. We know there are several items that council has some concerns and questions about as it relates to the budget. We've attempted to address those concerns either before the presentation of the budget back in early April and even after that as well. This year has been one of the most difficult budget years that Ms. Bradlin and I have ever had to deal with since our tenure here. And unfortunately, we're in a position as a city where we have a lot of things that we really want to do, and we're just not in a position yet to be able to do everything that we would like to do. And I know many of the likes that we would like to do are some of the likes that you all would want to do. And the budget as I presented, I believe is the best path forward for the city. And I do know that you all do have some questions, and we'll be happy to try to answer those questions here over the next few minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eads. So we'll sort of open it up for council discussion. And it's always an interesting budget season. There's things we like and we don't like, and things we want to do, and things we wish we could do. But what are, what's everyone's latest thoughts on where we're at?
Well, I'll start. Budgets are always tough. Nobody gets everything they want. But there's a lot of critical needs in this city. We've got problems and issues that we need to address, and the only way to address them is with money. And we need to figure out how we can pull some stuff back into this budget that was taken out. One of the biggest items, to which there's several big items, is the JASP program. Somehow, some way, this council needs to figure out how to put that back in the budget. We had a few ladies come before us last council meeting. It is proven that this works, not 100%, but the minimum amount of money that this city has funded that. The numbers that I've seen, every dollar that we have spent on that program came back to us on the back end. Yeah, we had to put it out up front, but at the end of the year, every dollar that we spent up front saved us a dollar on the back end. This program needs to be reinstated in this budget, this budget cycle. That's something that we've got, we've got to figure out how to make that happen. I mean, it's a program that is widely needed throughout this whole entire country. Drugs are destroying every community in this nation. And if we can help get one, two, three people off of drugs and back on their feet, then a quarter of a million dollars is not a lot of money, and we need to move forward with this because we are talking about people's lives. We are talking about mothers, sisters, brothers. And this is not a lot of money. It's going to take the whole entire community to do this. We've got, we've got the district attorney on board on this. He came before us requesting this be reinstated. We've got judges requesting this being reinstated. And we do not need to take this lightly. Somehow, we've got to put this back into the budget. And another big issue is this regional jail. Our new sheriff has requested for additional staffing that is already qualified, that is already trained. We are going into a world of unknowns with this transition with the regional jail. And it is my opinion that we move forward with caution on how many qualified law enforcements we give a pink slip to. Because not everybody's wanting to sign up these days. So we got to move forward with caution on that, and we need to talk about giving our sheriff what he is asking for because this is our community, and it has got to be kept safe. And another thing, we've got to find more money for that landfill. I have been saying for over a year that landfill needs more cover. And everybody I've talked to has used the term adequate cover. Nobody has ever given me an inch as a baseline because I have asked DEQ to their face, what is the minimum requirement of cover? And it always comes back adequate. I said, define adequate. They would not. This is the first piece of paper that I've seen that literally has six inches of compact. Well, that's not six inches of cover. That is roughly eight or nine inches of cover and then compact. So the safe rule would be to put a foot on it and then compact it. Well, I can tell you firsthand, our landfill does not have this cover. And I have talked to every one of y'all about this, and it needs to be fixed. Our city, our city and our sister city is suffering, and it has went on way too long. This needs to be priority. And I'm going to leave it at that because I can keep going all night long. But I'm going to request that we have a called meeting Thursday, this Thursday evening. Everybody's world needs to shut down, and this council get back in here with that budget and get into the nuts and the bolts of it and find the money to fix our critical needs. It is obvious from an email that the city manager sent out that this council is willing to give away close to $300,000 just in organizations outside agencies. That's not critical. Some of that money needs to be pulled back and used for the greater good of this city and its community, not a select group of people. And I am requesting a called meeting on the budget for Thursday night, and everybody bring your budgets and be ready to stay awhile.
Well, I have a few thoughts. I should have went first because I can't follow that. I agree with what Councilman Wingard said about the JASP program, first of all. You can look at the results that JASP has had here in Bristol, which has been somewhat limited because of COVID and its new program and stuff. But you can also look at the results that a similar program generated in Russell County and see that it is a that a similar program generated in Russell County and see that it is a program that can be very successful. It's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to cost about a quarter of a million dollars. And as it stands right now, that's not something that is in this budget as presented, but you know, technically speaking, we have up until the second reading to find that quarter of a million dollars, and I think it is, I think it's an important program. It does a lot of, you know, as Mr. Wingard said, it does a lot of good as far as it's an investment to save money later down the road, but you know, especially with the additional costs for regional jail, it's an investment for people, you know, and it's not always, you know, we have to balance the budget, but it's not always about money. It's about doing what's right for people in the community that are maybe having their worst day in their life, you know, and maybe it is the, you know, maybe it's not the worst day, maybe it's the worst six months of their life, you know, so it's not always about money, but it does have to be about money as far as balancing the budget. But if there is any way to fund the JASP program, it needs to be funded, because it can do a lot of good for a lot of people. It has a lot of potential. As it stands, it's not sent out droves and droves of graduates, but, but it can. And it's the kind of program that we need to find a way forward to fund. And I know that I say that, and then we'll have fourteen days to find the money basically, but it's important and we need to find a way to do it. As far as other budget items, we had discussed funding for outside agencies. Right now, the, the only changes that I would suggest, I know we've all discussed this amongst ourselves, would be increasing the funding by nineteen thousand five hundred dollars each for BCM and Believe in Bristol. That would bring them up, I believe, to fifty thousand dollars total for each of them. You can look at the results that BCM has presented with, you know, their, their bus tour marketing and the numbers that they're having people coming into the museum. It's a Smithsonian affiliated museum, and they do a lot of good, and they present a lot of educational materials for schools and for tourists. And Believe in Bristol, you know, they're our downtown group. They, they put on our Fourth of July parade, they put on our fireworks, they put on all the Christmas activities. So I would, I would be strongly in favor of the increase in nineteen thousand five hundred dollars each to bring them up to, up to fifty thousand dollars. And as far as the landfill, I mean, I agree completely. I know we're going to spend a significant amount of money going forward, up in the millions of dollars, I mean, when it's all said and done for what needs to happen at this landfill. And I know that over the next couple of weeks, there are discussions ongoing about how we move forward with this report from the, from the landfill experts. But we will, we will see a significant amount of money spent toward mitigating the landfill and, and fixing it and determining how we, how we move forward long-term and, and you know, what that looks like. So I agree, there will be a, be a very large amount of money spent on that.
Well, where'd you go?
I said way too much, go ahead.
No, that's fine, I'll go next. Well, as most of you all know, this is my first time, a first round with the budget cycle, being on the Bristol City Council. And it's been extremely difficult to have these discussions, because I think every one of us up here want to fund everything, and we have found out that all the funding is not there all the time, and trying to figure out then where it comes from and what's most important. And I agree, I think hearing from the folks that's graduated from the JASP program, and probably each one of us has had someone close to home that's been through something very similar to that. It's a huge problem in our region and in our city. And I agree that I'm, I'm in favor of the JASP program as well, but figuring out where to find that money to do it. And as well as the, you mentioned the Believe in Bristol and the Birthplace of Country Music adding the nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. I think I agree with that, and I would add to that to add the fifty thousand dollars to also Discover Bristol, because you know, those are entities that we get a return on investment from those. We get the meals and lodging taxes here keep going up. It's from visitors coming to town, and so we're getting our return on investment back from, from the money we're putting into these entities. And so I would add that to what Councilman Osborne suggested. But I'll just say, it's been, it's really tough. This whole process has been extremely difficult to really look through. I wish that we had all kinds of money, and maybe in the future, we can find the money to fund every single thing. But I, I'd like to see the, those, those things added to the budget. And I'm not opposed to, to meeting again and to meeting if it's Thursday or whenever, as you suggested, to talk through. But I know that it's also going to be difficult. We've got to find the money somewhere, and you just can't, you know, I, I think that we've also crunched numbers, and thank you to Ms. Bradlin and to our city manager, who both I know have been working very hard on this.
Yeah, this is, this is a tough budget. I mean, I've been through some tough budgets, some interesting budget cycles, and I think part of the reason that makes this budget so tough is it's really a transition that we're coming out of COVID, we're just starting to get back to whatever normal is going to look like. And yet, there are so many unknowns. We kind of know where we need to be in a couple of years, but there's unknowns. There's, you know, as you mentioned, one of the unknowns around the cost of the transition to the regional jail. I mean, I think they did a pretty good, staff has done a good job estimating those costs. You know, another unknown you mentioned, and, and you know, is the landfill. And, and we know there's costs for that, some of which are included in the budget, but we had the DEQ report come out after the budget was already made, so we're, I mean, I fully anticipate we're going to move money around, do supplemental appropriations come next year to try to reallocate those funds to, in a way that, that, that follows those, those timelines. And you know, the thing with the landfill, and it is unfortunately, I'm afraid, it's going to cost more and take longer than anybody wants to see. I mean, but you know, we'll, we'll find a way. So far, we've, we've found a way to get as far as we have. I think we're all committed to that. You know, there's, of course, you know, other unknowns out there. So you know, how do we kind of navigate this? And, and I, again, I always appreciate the work that the city staff, CFO, city manager, department heads, putting this together, because when they put it to us, it's balanced. And you know, so for us to go in and change things, you know, we have to unbalance it and rebalance it. And there's where the problem is. And, and I've, I've said this probably every year, just about during the budget, you know, that to make sure you, you do no harm. I mean, don't go in, and, and you know, you could easily fund one thing, but if you take it from something else that's equally important, or maybe more important, you could have a ripple effect. So you got to be mindful of where, where you, when you start moving money around, that you don't want to try to solve one problem and create zero or four by moving that money around. And you know, that's the challenge. You know, as far as, as what some of the other council members have said, you know, I completely agree with funding the BCM, Believe in Bristol, and the CVB, what they requested. They've had so, you know, through COVID, I think if you listen to their things, I mean, you want to talk about any group that's been impacted by COVID, that's it. They're bouncing back. You know, people are coming to our city, more will come, probably a lot more starting July eighth and thereafter. And we hope they don't, when they come here, they come downtown, they come to our festival. And that, you know, to me, the amount, it's relatively small in the overall scope of the budget, but that helps bring in more revenue by those people coming to our city, staying longer, coming downtown, spending money, eating meals, staying in our hotels. I think we see, you know, the return on revenue, so that's a good investment. The JASP program, you know, I appreciate everyone that came and spoke at the public hearing. It was a very, some very good presentations, very eye-opening, the information they presented. And again, I would say, one, that's a, as Councilman Wingard said, that's a good program. I mean, I think, you know, if you just want to look at it dollar for dollar, we'll get our money back, you know, but as the vice mayor said, it's more than just money. I mean, it, it impacts people's lives. So again, I, I would be happy to, to try to find a way to fund that, and especially in this transition period, as we move from the jail downtown to the regional jail. I think having that there would be critical. Maybe, you know, once you get that transition out of the way, you can see, you know, is it going to be, it might be more necessary with the regional jail. I don't know, people might want to enter the program more rather than, than go to the regional jail. But I think having it in place at least this year would, is one of those things that are helping that transition. As I said, the landfill, it's, it's in a state of flux. We will be moving that around. The, and I am concerned, you know, with our public safety. I mean, the sheriff, and you mentioned the deputies, I don't, you know, I know, talked to him, and, and he's sent us all, I think, some emails, but you know, again, you want to make sure that you have enough people there at the courthouse to take care of what's needed. But we also want to make sure we have enough police, and I think we, we've tried to help there, as well as the fire. Some of those though are bigger, I don't know that you're going to solve all of those in one budget cycle, but I think if we could find a, a position or two maybe for the sheriff, I think we might, depends on the amount of money, but it's all coming up before you find that. You know, I've had some discussions with other council members, with city staff, said where I thought some of that money could come from. Some people liked the idea and some people didn't. So there's where the rubber meets the road. I mean, and, and you're right, Mr. Wingard, we probably do need to come back. I don't know if it's Thursday night, but I don't think we're going to solve anything just sitting here tonight, but you know, I think there's some agreement on certain areas, and we're really going to have to sit down and kind of, you know, take from, rob from Peter to pay Paul, take from one pot to put in another to make this work. And where can you do that that has the least detrimental impact on our community? I mean, I think, you know, on one hand, because the, the city staff is, is very conservative in their budget, I think there's certain things they, that will happen that, that, one, they don't really know, so it's hard to budget for, but I think there's, you know, some revenues that start flowing into the city over the course of next year that aren't accounted for in this budget. But I think there's a lot of places, there's a lot of other needs, we don't know where those revenues may end up going as well. So it's tricky, and we got to be careful, but those are the areas I'd like to see us have a lot more discussion on, and I'm more than willing to, to do that as my schedule
Well, I just wanted to, just to add to what you were saying, I think using that term, a transition period is, is good, because it's true, the last really two whole years, things have happened that we never expected in, in the world, but also with our budget. So, so coming out of COVID, and I think we're seeing that now, we're seeing people that are traveling and, and eating out in the city when we look at our, our meal tax and restaurant, meal tax and hotel lodging tax. So it, it seems like that we're, we're coming out of that, but a lot of, a lot of transitions, a lot of things happening, like with the jail, with the school system, with the landfill. Some things that we have an idea what they will cost, and some things that we, we don't quite exactly know still, but, but there are things that we just have to fund. So again, one thing I wanted to add is that, that we didn't really talk about, and I do know we, you know, we want to talk about some, some things that we could tweak or changes we could make, but there are some things that are in the presented budget that are in there that we, we just kind of skipped over. There, there's raises for, for every employee with the city, and then some bigger raises for police officers and firefighters. And there's more funding for the school system, significantly more. I know we've talked about the construction of the new school, but there's also just money just for their operational, what we give them each year, there's more funding than there was last year. So we're funding our school system more. So I, I think that, that's great to be able to say that there's some things like that that are going on, because of, just a few years ago, and I know you guys have probably been through the most budgets. We, there were times when we wished we could have given employees a raise and we could not, and now we are doing it. So it, it feels good that, that we've been able to take those steps, and I feel like over the past, I'll say maybe four, five years, the city's budgeted very conservatively, and it's, it's been paying off for us to be able to do some of those things. And one, one question I wanted to ask, and Mr. Eads, if you're on the line, I, just a procedural question about where we, where we have the first reading scheduled for tonight, and then in two weeks, we have the, the second reading, which is basically the, the final reading. So we can make tweaks now, but we can also make some tweaks and changes along the way between now and then, in the next few weeks before the second reading and final vote. Is that safe to say? Is that accurate to say?
That's correct. And you cannot make any changes to any of the top line revenue items or department line items, as if we make any changes there, we will have to re-advertise the budget ordinance and go through the process again.
And that is what I was going to talk about next, is we're, we're so far along in this budget that time is no longer our friend. We see that there's things that, that we need to get together, and we need to discuss and hammer them out, see what we can put in, and, and everybody is right, it's a balanced budget. So if we fund the sheriff, if we fund JASP, if we fund this, we got to pull the money from somewhere, but it's doable. We got a pretty good, but we got a pretty significant budget, and we're not talking about a tremendous amount of money here, okay? It's just tweaking. You pull a little from here, you pull a little from there, and it's just connecting the dots and putting the puzzle back together, okay? You don't devastate anybody, okay? We're devastating a few of these programs, and we, we should not. One, my question is, do we have a consensus for a called meeting Thursday night?
I wanted to say, I won't be available this Thursday night.
And I was going to say, I don't believe that the CFO is available on Thursday night either. And I'll also go on to state that next week, the CFO would be unavailable, the entire next week.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate, because this is, this is critical. I would like to see the, the first reading postponed, because once you vote on this first reading here, there's, your hands are tied. You're not going to be able to change but little bits and pieces to this budget. It's percentages, and it's very small. We are sitting here in a position right now tonight, that this first reading needs to be postponed, and then we need to have us a budget meeting and see what we can agree on and what we do not agree on, but where we end up at the end of the night. And then we need to advertise for the first reading. Shortly thereafter, we all get together, because we haven't got together, this whole entire budget. Y'all may have been talked to about it to hammer this. Y'all may have been talked to about it to hammer this out and hammer that out. But I have not. And there's a lot of work to be done. So if it's not Thursday night, it needs to be tomorrow night.
Just to throw that out there, I'm, I'm unavailable tomorrow on Thursday, but I could meet Saturday or whether it be this upcoming Tuesday or, or whenever we, if we schedule another meeting. Um, but the next two nights.
I mean, this is important. We got to make it happen. We got to get together. We got to figure out how to keep these programs intact and keep our sheriff funded as much as possible. This is, this is critical. We're sitting here tonight knowing that we need to get together to hash this out. So somebody's going to have to cancel some plans because this is city business. And we all signed up to do city business.
Can I ask a question of, uh, either the city manager or the CFO or whomever it would be better addressed to? Um, as Councilman Wingard said, we are, we are kind of, we're on the clock, uh, as far as having a finite amount of time to do this. Um, what happens if we postpone it? What, can you play out the timeline for, for how we would do that before June 30th?
Well, first I want to state that before I presented this budget, I went over this budget line item by line item with, uh, everyone. Not before I presented it, but a, a lot of the big ticket items y'all are discussing tonight. And no one seemed to have any issues with what I was going to present in my budget back on April the 7th. And then I presented that budget, uh, and of course, over time, those things have changed. So we move forward on this schedule based on the responses we get back from council as we develop a budget. And it's unfortunate that it's come to a situation that is probably going to require us to start the budget process over again if we're talking about adding roughly, uh, half a million dollars of expenses to the budget. Uh, at this point, if anything is postponed, I think we'd be best served to, uh, start to, as you all know, I'm, I'm out. Uh, technically, I probably shouldn't even be on this call right now. But, um, this is a, um, you know, it's important. And I, I, I try to make myself available to the city as much as I can during this time while I'm out. But, uh, we, um, postponing it will put us up to the June 30th deadline. It will require us to re-advertise the budget and put in an emergency calls within the budget to make it effective as of July 1st.
So you're saying that the option of, uh, table in this first reading till after council can get together and figure out some funding sources? That our hands are tied with this first reading tonight? That there's no path forward for this council to get together and discuss this? And then have another called meeting for the first reading?
Well, counsel, you all can do as you please. Uh, we can have a first reading in June. It's just going to require us to re-advertise it things and, uh, have a shortened timeline on getting the budget passed in June. Um, you know, it can be done. I don't think it's preferable. I don't think that's, um, something that we should do, but it can be done. Uh, you know, I'd also go on and state that, you know, we've talked about the budget since January. And, uh, we've had numerous discussions about the budget in the spring individually in our weekly meetings over the phone. And I know some council members have been talking with others, but it's a, um, we're, we're on a timeline. And that's not my timeline. That's a state law timeline.
I understand that, but as you go through a budget cycles, you know, things change. People, people see what is being added, what's being pulled out, what's being cut. And then that is time for them to chime in, you know, uh, we have met and discussed the budget and, you know, I was led to believe that the JAS program was a failed program and, uh, there was no longer a need for it. And then, you know, here we have some very important people come before this council and say otherwise. And, uh, so now that sheds new light on that. And, you know, as far as the sheriff's office goes, uh, we have a new sheriff that's trying to get his head wrapped around the day's events and the things that's taking place in this city and, uh, how this is all going to play out with this transition. And I do not believe that his request of four additional officers is a huge request. Uh, so I feel like that we need to try our best to accommodate that and make that happen. Budgets are just that. They're a budget. They are changeable up until the time that everybody agrees. And it is time for this council to meet and do some serious, serious discussion and take a hard look at that budget to where we know at the end of the day that it's the best that it can be. Things have changed. And there has got to be a path to move forward without, with out, and I'm going to stress that, without this first reading. Because when this first reading takes place tonight, you're not going to be able to change this budget but by little bitty pieces. So if you're happy with the budget, the way it is tonight, you will vote for this first reading. If you're not, we will meet as soon as possible to get our heads wrapped around this to deliver the best possible budget that we can. And we are all five signed up for this job. And this is where it gets tough. We got to work for the people to give them the best budget we can. And we are running out of time.
Mr. Eads, Mr. Eads, can you hear?
Yes, I, I can hear you.
Okay, uh, clarify some things for me. If we re-advertise, we have to re-advertise for 10 days, seven days, 14 days?
Uh, 10 days. And Ms. Bradlin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 10 days prior to the, um, public hearing for the budget.
I, I believe, I believe it's seven, Mr. Eads. We, we do it the Sunday before the Tuesday meeting. We give ourselves extra time. But I, I'm pretty sure, Mr. Eads, it's seven.
So we, we have to advertise for a minimum of seven days? We can have a, before a public hearing?
I don't have the stakeout in front of me, but that's what I'm raising.
I mean, I, I think it's either seven or 10.
Well, we advertise it on a Sunday for the following Tuesday. So that's not 10 days. So I'm pretty sure it's seven.
So that's for a public hearing. We can have the first reading the same night as the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
And then we have to wait seven days to have a second reading of an ordinance?
Yes.
So if my math on that is right, we've got time to talk about this, even if we had to re-advertise it. And so if, if, I mean, I think if, we're definitely going to need to talk about this. I guess the question would be, do we want to talk about it? Do we want to table this and then see if we've made enough changes to where we need to re? Well, of course, if we don't do this by the end of the month, we're going to have to re-advertise it because it doesn't have a, a, an emergency clause. So we, we'd have to re-advertise it anyway. But I think we've got enough time if we wanted to advertise it. And that's what gets me is I don't think, you know, as far as the, the numbers and moving things around. But it's like if, if we would have to re-advertise it because there's not a clause in here and, and that would allow this to take effect less than 30 days after passage, then, then we need to make sure that's in there and re-advertise just for that. Because if we took a week or two to talk about this, e- e- even if we agreed under this, we still would need to re-advertise.
I think the biggest points that, um, that we're talking about is, is the alternative sentencing program. Um, employees with the sheriff's department a- a- and then some funding for some outside agencies. I think are the biggest points. So, uh, I was going to go ahead and just throw this out there. And I, I may be wrong, but in my opinion, I think that we could have the first reading of the budget tonight. And then if we have a budget workshop, whether it be this Saturday, which is the, uh, 14th or one week from tonight, Tuesday, the 17th, and have a, that'd be the only item, a budget workshop where we discuss. And then, and then go from there. Or as of now, the second reading was going to be the next Tuesday, the 24th, but.
Well, see, I, I disagree with that. I haven't even started talking about, we need a city attorney. And if the city manager would, is wanting to apply for the city attorney, then we need to find a city manager. It is time to put that position back in place. The dual roles is not ideal. That was done with the council before because this city was in a crisis mode with our finances. It was a crisis. We're no longer in a crisis. And that position needs to be filled. City manager, city attorney. We need to find that money. There's several things we need to talk about and, 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 and work on. And I, I really, I really hope that this is tabled tonight because I'm, I'm afraid that if it moves forward, then it, it is what it is and the budget will stand.
What do y'all think?
Uh, I have a question.
Counsel, can we have a short recess? Can we have a short recess real quick? And, uh, we'll continue this discussion after the recess.
Let, let me ask my one question real quick and then I don't have any problem with that. Um, just, just a quick question for the CFO. Have, have you been, I, I saw your writing when we were all throwing out our wish list. Do you, do you have a rough running total of how much additional will be added to the budget? Just with the things we've talked about?
Yes, I'm, I'm unclear. Um, I'll read what I wrote down. Um, I wrote down that clearly there is a consensus. When I say consensus, I mean more than three. Mr. Eads, please correct me if I'm wrong. I was writing as they were speaking. Um, but, um, when, uh, when I say consensus, I mean three or more of council. Um, sounded to me like there were, um, three or more for the JAS program. Um, three or more for, um, additional funding for birthplace of country music. Three or more for, um, additional funding for, um, Believe in Bristol. Um, I heard two for Discover Bristol and I was not clear on the count for the jail. Um, just because I, I, I just wasn't clear. No offense for the, the sheriff. I, I, I didn't see, I didn't hear three or more say that. That's what I was trying to keep track of is what is, um, the, the will of council? Um, so that Mr. Eads and I then can begin to figure out how far are we off dollar wise? And I was just counting, um, what I heard. So 19,500, 19,500, and then the JAS program deficit is what I heard three or more say in specific terms. Um, if I missed something, um, I just didn't write it down. I was trying to write as we went. So it sounds to me like that, that's what I heard. Mr. Eads, would you, is that what you heard?
That's what I've heard so far, yes.
And JAS, JAS was 243, I think is the number.
And you did not get a consensus of three on the, the four additional sheriffs?
Let me, let me look again, Mr. Wingard, okay? Heard you. I, I heard people mention, um, in, in their conversation, but now is it as good a time as any? If I missed that, then, then let me get that. I did not hear specifically four positions for the sheriff. Um, it, and that doesn't mean it wasn't said. It just means I missed it. So if there is a consensus, then we would, um.
Do you, do you have a price tag on, on what the four positions would be?
At the top of my head, we would say, and I would have to know positions and those type things. Um, oh, I hate to throw that out. I would, I would say a ballpark would be 50,000 with benefits. And sheriff, if I'm saying that wrong, I apologize. I don't have my notes in front of me. I'm not sure what, um, 50 to 60, depending on what those positions would be full-time.
About 50 to 60.
With benefits.
So is, is that number inclusive of benefits or do you have to add the benefits?
I don't know what the positions are, but if, I mean, I could say 50 to 60 would include benefits. Four, four deputy positions. And once again, I'm, I don't have my numbers in front of me. And I'm, I don't have what those four positions are.
Well, that's what I was led to believe, that four positions, it's going to be somewhere around 200 to 220,000 with benefits.
Don't go ahead and do your recess here.
Yeah, that sounds good. If that's okay with everyone, let's go ahead and, let's take a five-minute recess. We're back in session. That was a little longer than five minutes. Gene, uh, is Randy back on the call yet? Okay. We'll wait for him to get back on the call and, and Ms. Bradlin to get back. Mr. Eads, can you hear us okay? We'll give him one more minute.
Gene, can you hear me?
Yep. We can hear you good, Mr. Eads.
Can, okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. I appreciate the quick recess that we just had. Um, after some discussions with the CFO and how we move forward based on what we're seeing tonight and based on conversations that we've had with council in the past. Um, over the past several weeks, it's been a pretty consistent consensus that, uh, the majority of council wanted to fund Believe in Bristol and VCM an additional 19,500 dollars for roughly a total of $39,000. We, uh, received our final insurance quotes over the past week. We will be able to fund that $40,000 through three insurance line items. We, uh, Ms. Bradlin and I also spoke about JAS and two positions at the sheriff's department. We can fund JAS approximately $243,000. Ms. Bradlin will work this week to, um, get a final number for that. And we can also fund two positions with the sheriff's department. Those, that, those two items will be funded through the jail transportation clause line item. That's in 31010. There's a $500,000 line item there. We will fund those positions and that program through that $500,000. We will make up that five, we will make up what we take out of that, uh, on July 1st, either through additional revenue sources or through ARPA funding. And I believe that addresses everyone's concerns that have been brought up tonight.
Well, I think, uh, we still have the landfill issue on this cover. That's, that's not going to be cheap. We got to get that landfill covered. And I'd like to see the, uh, sheriff's department be funded the entire four. And I'd like to, uh, see the, uh, city attorney's position, uh, filled. Or you take the city attorney and we hire another city manager. So a quick fix tonight is just that it's a Band-Aid. We still have a lot of work that we need to do. We still have a lot of work that we need to do to fix issues that we know needs to be fixed. It is time for this city to have a city manager and a city attorney. Our crisis days are over with. That's not to say we won't hit them again. I mean, you start giving all the money away, you can't operate the city. Can't pay the bills. I'm still requesting that we have a budget meeting with council and we discuss everything that has been presented tonight, issues-wise. And we figure out a way to make as much of it happen as we can instead of shooting from the hip because there's a little insurance money we're saving and because of this and because of that, and just do the JASP and do two sheriffs and leave everything else laying the way it is. I'm not, I'm not content with that. We've got work to do.
So I have a, I have a couple of questions for clarification. As far as the sheriff's deputy, and this might be a question for the CFO or the city manager. Far as the sheriff's deputies go, I know that because of the jail closing, there's a total of eight comp board funded positions. And I, I think in the recommended budget, we, we fund initially an additional seven. Is that, is that right?
Yes, there's sixteen.
That's correct, and there's. Go ahead, Ms. Bradlin.
Sorry, Mr. Eads. There are sixteen, one of which is funded by Howland's Community Services. So that gets us to fifteen. So, so there are local positions there beyond the comp board.
Okay, so, so we're, in, in the original recommended budget, there are seven funded? I think that was the number.
I think there's eight.
Eight.
Let me look, let me look. Just one second. He's wanting to know local funded. I don't have that in front of me. To the best of my recollection, it was eight comp board positions. And we were, then the city was gonna fund seven.
Okay, and then so now the two additional bring us to nine funded. And, you know, I would say, correct me if I'm wrong again, you know, as far as the funding for the landfill, we, we've kind of thought about different funding mechanisms for that. You know, because it's such a significant amount of money, it doesn't show up in our regular budget as it is presented because it'll be through other revenue sources. It's not, it's not all local money for the landfill, right?
There, in Fund Thirty-five, there is some, some money set aside for the ARPA money. There is money set aside for landfill liner or another similar, you know, if the liner changes anyway. There's money set aside for a liner if needed. If it's not used for a liner, it can be used for something else. And the benzene mitigation in Fund Thirty-five.
But a lot of that is coming through ARPA?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that, you know, these proposals that we've discussed to, to change the budget, especially JASP is a very significant amount of money. And, and as I said earlier, it's, it's a very needed program, so I'm glad to see that. On the, on the question of, of a city attorney, you know, when, when the previous iteration of city council cut the funding for a city attorney, I, I, you know, it was not a good idea to cut the funding for city attorney originally. I understand why it happened, you know, they were in, as Mr. Wingard said, in crisis mode. But it's very hard, once you cut, I would think, a significant amount of money like that to just add it back. I mean, we just, we just went into panic mode to find two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for JASP. But I would imagine that, you know, the cost of a city attorney would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars probably on its own, which is a significant amount of money to find. And, you know, as, as has been said tonight, this is kind of a gap year, kind of a bridge year. You know, it is a wonderful goal to have two separate positions, but, you know, unless you wanna cut a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from, from police salary raises or from firefighter funding or something, you know, I don't know where the hundred and eighty thousand dollars or however much it would cost would come from. And that's just an estimate because my understanding is that you can either have someone on staff providing them benefits or you can let them bill you hourly. So you, you really have, if you bill them hourly, you really have no idea how much money it's gonna cost to have a separate city attorney. So I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful goal to have, but I don't think that it's feasible. I mean, we've been talking for an hour about how to fund these needed programs. I don't, I don't know that it's feasible to add another management-level employee.
To clarify, the one deputy that's funded Howland's Community Service? Is that, or what'd you say, the one is not, non-local funded?
Yes, and I, I have looked it up. In the, in the budget, there are eight comp board funded positions. So in Mr. Eads' recommended budget of fifteen, eight comp boards, seven local plus one that is funded with, through Howland's Community Services. And I would defer to the, to the sheriff to speak about the exact duties of that position. But Howland's Community Services will reimburse the city a hundred percent for salaries and benefits for that.
Mr. Bradlin, is that the part of that, that CTAC team? Is that why they're funding it? Okay. I, I was just trying to figure out why they were funding a deputy position, but.
So in the budget, you see that that expenditure is reported in under recovered costs nineteen oh one oh. You'll see that money coming back in from Howland's Community Services.
That's one question. You know, the city attorney, I'll just say, you know, this year, I, I actually added it to one of my goals. I'd like to see us get back there, and, and it takes a while. And to me, that's a good example of the JASP, the jail. Once you cut something, it is extremely hard to put it back. These outside agencies, I mean, we're just now getting back to where some of them were before they got cut four years ago. And part of that's due to COVID. But part of it is, when you cut this money, it's gotta go somewhere. And it usually goes to fund something that's more immediate. And it's not like it's sitting over here to the side and next year you can say, oh, I'll bring that back in. It's committed to whatever that is because that's probably a recurring expense. And when that got cut, the city attorney, I sat, I sat here and said it wasn't a good idea. It didn't need to be cut. The budget was balanced at that point, that year. And, you know, and it's one of those things. Do we need it? Yeah, we probably do. But, you know, I think having deputies, as many as we can fund at the courthouse, having the JASP program that's gonna help our inmates and, and help the community is more of a priority. And we, we can't do everything this year. I know that. I mean, we all know that. So, you know, if we could find that, I'd be willing to consider it. But like I say, I don't know where we're gonna find it without taking from something that is much, much more needed. I appreciate the fact that y'all could, and I'm sure you've been thinking about this as you've had conversations with us over the last week, but kind of where some of these ideas might come from. As I say, you know, there, there are some things out there that look like, oh, we could take from that. And you realize, no, you really can't because you're gonna set yourself up for a much bigger problem. So, you know, I guess this solves some problems. It doesn't solve them all. I mean, I'm, my question would be if we do this, have a first reading, still come back and, and see, you know, I'm fine with having a meeting and talking more and see if we could come back and maybe, maybe add a little more in some of these areas. I, I really don't know where it's gonna come from. I was kind of wondering where some of this would come from. And I guess the one thing that, of course, I don't think there was a consensus for it, but that was brought up is funding for Discover Bristol. But I guess since there's not, wasn't a consensus, that would kind of be what it, what it is.
I, I just wanted to say, Mr. Hartley, what you just mentioned, you, you said the term, you know, it fixes some things, but it doesn't fix everything. And I think that's exactly where we're at in this position. I mean, and I'll just say it, there's only so much money to go around. And I'd love to give, fully fund everything. I mean, so we've talked, we had our presented budget, and we talked about adding some funding to Believe in Bristol and the museum, back to what we used to fund them years ago. And we, what Mr. Eads just said over the phone and what we spoke about regarding moving some funds around to fund the JASP program and finding funds for two additional sheriff's officers for the sheriff, which I think are needed. I, I think it fixes some things and we're moving in the right direction. But, but yeah, there are some things that we haven't even talked about, like, well, I was very vocal about, you know, wanting to add in some additional funds for the firefighters that have the, the ALS paramedic certification that they don't really get anything extra for, but other localities pay them more when they're certified paramedics. But I understand, there's only so much money to go around. And while I love to fund everything, I think we're, I think the recommendations that we're wanting to make, the changes that we can make, I think we are moving in the right direction. While it's not perfect, I, I don't think we're going backwards. I do think we're, we're moving forward in the right direction, especially if, if we can, like we mentioned, the, the biggest one, the biggest points of contention we talked about, trying to find money to fund the alternative sentencing program and, and some additional money for the, for the sheriff, for some positions there. It's not, it's not perfect, but I do think we're moving in the right direction.
And counsel, I just wanna summarize where we're, well, I guess, is there anything else that anybody else wants to say before I summarize? That way everybody knows what page we're on.
Just to clarify, so if we incorporate these changes tonight, do, do we, we still would have the ability between the first and second reading to incorporate additional changes if we could figure something else out? If there was something we wanted to do? Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
To what percentage?
You can change, as long as you're not changing what the numbers are presented in the budget ordinance, then you can change within, within each department line item.
So in other words, we couldn't increase our revenues?
Or increase overall.
That's correct.
Or increase overall expenditures. If you add an expenditure somewhere, you have to reduce somewhere.
In other words, it, it, the budget's still, what, what I've been saying all along, it has to balance. And we can't say, we want a city attorney, which, and Mr. Osborne's right. I think before it was cut out, it was at a hundred and eighty, and that was for one on retainer. And even one in-house with benefits would have been a little cheaper, but not much at, at full-time. So you're looking at, you know, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We can't just say, we're gonna increase the cigarette tax by that much or just to make it work kind of thing. That's, yeah. So it's gotta actually come, take from something to, to make something. But is, but if we can find somewhere that we're on agreement, we could take a little bit from that. We could add it to something else between the first and the second reading, right? Then, you know, one thing, in looking at this, and I know you're gonna be gone next week and give people time. I, I mean, we, I would say we could, I don't know that, as long as this is, correct me if I'm wrong with Streets, but as long as this is done by the end of May, it would still fall, if you had a second reading. So we would have that whole week of the twenty-third, and we could have a call meeting on the thirty-first just to have the second reading and adoption, and you wouldn't have to re-advertise.
That's correct.
So we would have time both at the regular council meeting and if we wanted to have a call meeting to, to have some more discussion, to still go through some of these, to really think about, look at where, you know, again, you know, it's one thing to say, I wanna see this, but okay, propose something. And, and I mean, that's the thing, you know, when I looked at the budget and talked it over with the city manager and CFO, there were things I, I clearly did not like. And I said, here's my thought of where this is coming from. And then they explained to me why that wasn't as good an idea as I thought because of the downstream effects taking that money from that one line item would have that I probably hadn't fully thought through and considered. I mean, because sometimes you've got to keep that in mind, what you're doing. But I think, I mean, I'm open to having more discussion, but also I think this is, solves some of our problems. It's a good place to start and lets us move forward. And to be honest, if, if in three more weeks, if we're still can't figure it out, I don't know that thirty more days is gonna help us figure it out. I mean, we're just gonna sit here and talk in circles. So in some ways, having a deadline would move that forward, so. That's my thought.
Okay. So we are on this item two budget discussion that we added in, if it's okay with everyone. Because we did have someone sign up for public comment to move on to the next item, which is the first reading of the budget ordinance. There's still, yeah, go ahead and summarize, Mr. Eads. And I was just gonna say, there's still council discussion in the next item.
And I'd like for the record to reflect, there's been a lot of discussion about the city attorney position. And I know I occupy both roles, and I know I present the budget. In the spring of two thousand eighteen, I had a city attorney in that budget. And the majority of council in the spring of two thousand and eighteen took that city attorney position out of the budget. So I just want the record to reflect, and I'm asking the clerk to put that in the minutes, that I previously had put that into the, city attorney into the budget, and it was taken out by the majority of council members in the spring of two thousand and eighteen. And one of those council members sits on this council. So just to summarize, moving forward, Believe in Bristol and VCM will each receive a nineteen thousand five hundred of additional funding that is coming from three insurance line items where there is some savings based on a final quote that we just received. JASP will be funded approximately two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars along with two sheriff's deputies' positions. So that will be funded from thirty-one oh one oh, which is a, and a line item under Jail Transportation Costs, which currently has five hundred thousand in that line item. And we will either make that up through additional revenue sources or through ARPA funding on or about July first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you for that summary. I think that's, that's what I understood as well. So if it is okay to move on, we will have a more, another discussion item in the next item about the budget. Item E, first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. There was one person that signed up for public comment for this item, and that was Mr. Wolf. Would you like to comment? You thought we forgot about you.
I, I really wanna thank you for your comments and your, your support of the JASP program. I just didn't want this opportunity to go by before you take a vote without speaking in favor of the JASP program again. But I really appreciate your support of that. As you say, once these programs are gone, they're gone. And it's very difficult, as you've discussed, to, once that money goes out, there's a, it's very hard to put that money back in. I would say that the reason that your budget is balanced, though, is because that two hundred and forty-three thousand was zeroed out of that line item and placed into other things in your budget now. So, you know, that just is an example of how things can, you know, priorities change and that kind of thing. But as far as what these programs do, they do help a lot of people. And I hope that the handout that I, I gave you last time showed that actually this program or these programs do pay for themselves. Not just in helping people who need the help, but also in reducing your jail costs. And, you know, I don't know how many inmates you are contracting for, but I can tell you that the figures that I've heard, that four years ago, our jail population was even more. but I can tell you that the figures that I've heard, that four years ago, our jail population was even more than that. And without these programs there to try to help offset and keep people out of the, the prison system, that those numbers will just continue to go up, and your cost will continue to go up. So I am, I have great faith that these programs will continue to help the city to save money and will save enough to pay for these programs totally. And so anyway, I, I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. That was the only person that signed up for public comment for this item. Uh, the next item is staff report.
Counsel, uh, tonight is the first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. The public hearing of the budget ordinance took place on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, city, at the city council meeting. Notice that that public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald-Cole Year on April seventeenth of twenty twenty-two, and tonight is for the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions, or is there any motion by the council?
Um, I will make a motion, um, for first reading of the budget ordinance by caption only, uh, with the changes discussed, which were increased funding for BCM, Believe in Bristol, restoration of the JAS program, and two additional officers funded for the sheriff's department. And that is my motion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and is there council discussion?
Yeah, uh, I want a little bit of clarification. So tonight, according to Mr. Osborne's motion, he indicated the areas, and I think we got a sense of discussion, but also, one, um, for some reason, we kept saying eighteen, nineteen hundred, to, it would be twenty-three thousand, or, yeah, twenty-three thousand each for Believe in Bristol and Birthplace of Country Music in those line items, uh, eighty-one oh thirty. Just to make that clear, but also. Yeah, to fund them at, to fifty. I think somebody was looking at the, the increase over what was like from previous year, um, or from what was in the original budget. But also, I guess, it's going to take Ms. Bradlin a, a day or two to come back with the exact line items and to know how this has been changed. And so we, we can go ahead and have the motion without knowing the exact line items, but before we have the second reading and adoption, you'll provide that information to us. Would that be correct?
What, what council will have, um, the night of the second reading is I will do a, um, a, um, an Excel spreadsheet that we'll put up on the screen that shows you what was increased and what was decreased.
Okay.
And then after the second reading, um, um, finance staff, um, primarily Mr. Phillips with a little bit of help from me, will, um, prepare the final book, and we'll have that available. It will not be ready until after the second reading is approved.
Yeah.
But we will have the changes up there for council and the public to see from the admin recommended, what increased and what decreased.
So, but, but also, when you say from these insurance line items, we can see the exact where, where, which.
You'll have the account number and the account name.
Because, like I say, I know right now we don't, but just want to make sure. And it's all right to vote on it this way without knowing the exact line item.
Yes, the appropriation ordinance is by fund.
Okay.
Council appropriates by fund.
Well, I, I just wanted to chime in again and say, I, I do think with our discussion tonight that we've made progress, and we're heading in the right direction. Again, it, it's not perfect. In a perfect world, we could fund everything fully with whatever anyone asks for, but we do only have so much taxpayer dollars to go around. So to be able to make the changes that were recommended, um, do think it's a step in the right direction. And we have more work to do. I think we'll have, um, more discussions over the next, you know, coming days and weeks, um, before our ultimate second reading and passage, but, but we do, um, we do tonight, I think, have something to be, to be proud of, that we're making progress. And again, some of the other items that we just, you know, kind of skipped over, the increase of funding to our school system, and, um, raises for our first responders, our police officers, and our firefighters, um, you know, we're, we're making progress, so it's a lot different than the city was about four or five years ago. So. Yes, since, since we have a motion and a second, Mr. Hartley, if you'd like to read something for that.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point three dash three one, one five H, I Bill Hartley, I'm an officer of the City of Bristol, is required to declare his interest pursuant to subdivision B one, section two point two dash three one, one two. That, that, that declare my interest by stating, the city council is voting on the fiscal year twenty-three budget ordinance. My wife is employed by the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. I am a member of a group that could be affected by the transaction due to my wife's employment with the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Are there any other questions or discussions? Hearing none. Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. A reading of the ordinance by caption only. Mr. Eads?
Ordinance twenty-two hyphen six, budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two hyphen twenty twenty-three, Making General Fund, Community Development Lot Grant Fund, Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund, Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, Transit Enterprise Fund, Asset Forfeiture Fund, COVID-nineteen Federal Funds Fund, School Operating Fund, School Textbook Fund, School Food Service Fund, and School Local Capital Projects Fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the following amounts. General Fund, fifty-nine million, eight hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Community Development Lot Grant Fund, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund, seven million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, seven million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, ninety-five thousand dollars. Transit Enterprise Fund, six hundred eighty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars. Asset Forfeiture Fund, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred dollars. COVID-nineteen Federal Funds Fund, ten million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. School Operating Fund, forty-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. School Textbook Fund, one million, two thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. School Food Service Fund, two million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and two dollars. School Local Capital Projects Fund, six hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. And regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eads. The next item of our agenda is ordinance's second reading, an ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located at seven eight zero Gate City Highway. No one signed up for public comment for this item. Staff report.
Hi, counsel, this is the second reading of ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located at seven eighty Gate City Highway. Felty Properties LLC has submitted an application for a zoning map amendment for its property located at seven eighty Gate City Highway. The property is currently zoned R-two, single and two-family residential, and the request is rezoned the property to B-three, General Business District. The property consists of approximately two point one eight acres, and the current use is professional office. The ordinance, staff report, and site plan for rezoning is attached. Previous relevant action includes, the planning commission recommended the request for a joint public hearing with the city council on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The joint public hearing was held at the regular city council meeting on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The request was recommended to the city council for approval by the planning commission by six zero vote at its April twentieth, twenty-two meeting. The request was approved on the first reading at April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. The property had previously received a special use permit in two thousand and fourteen to operate a professional office in an R-two zoning district.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eads. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for, um, second reading of the, uh, zoning map amendment, uh, ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance number twenty-two hyphen four, an ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving the request by Felty Properties LLC to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential R-two, to general business district B-three for property described as seven eighty Gate City Highway map parcels number twenty-two hyphen two hyphen one hyphen one, one eight, two, three, four, and twenty-two hyphen seven hyphen one hyphen eighteen eight.
Now we're looking for a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance.
Uh, I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
The second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item is second reading of an ordinance to update city code section fifty hyphen two forty-two definitions and section fifty hyphen thirty-two, three, permitted uses in a B-three district. No one signed up for public comment for this item. Staff report.
Counsel, this request is update sections fifty hyphen two forty-two definitions and fifty hyphen thirty-two paragraph three permitted uses in a B-three district. The updates are to add definitions for cannabis dispensing facility and pharmaceutical processor, and to allow them by right in a B-three zoning district, as long as they are located a minimum of five hundred feet door-to-door from all schools and licensed daycare centers. The planning commission recommended the item for a joint public hearing with city council on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one. The joint public hearing was held at the regular city council meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The planning commission voted six oh to recommend approval of the ordinance to the city council at the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. This item was previously considered at the February eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting and the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The city council voted to approve the request on the first reading of the ordinance at its April twenty-sixth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
Before we revert, I just want to say, uh, one, commend the staff and the planning commission for bringing this to our attention, for thinking ahead. Uh, and, uh, seems like we discussed this quite a bit, and, and it's different iterations, but at the end, uh, I think it's a good example of, of, uh, good discussion and a good compromise to come out with something that I think will prepare us, uh, for things down the road.
I agree. It's, um, it's not often that we're ahead of the curve on something. Um, so I am very glad that we're way ahead of the curve on this and not dealing with it when it's, you know, right up on top of us, so this is good.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Okay, a reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-two hyphen five, title amending chapter fifty, land use, article two, zoning, division three, section fifty hyphen thirty-two, land uses in division eighteen, section fifty hyphen two forty-two, definitions of code of Bristol, Virginia, addition of new definitions.
Thank you. Now we're looking for a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance.
Uh, I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Uh, the next item is our consent agenda, and we pulled out item three earlier. So this will be the consent agenda items one, two, four, and five.
Uh, I move for approval of consent agenda items one, two, four, and five as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wengard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Okay, the final item of the consent agenda, item number three, what's the pleasure of the council?
Um, I know this is a consent agenda item, but, uh, can we discuss for a second? So the, I, I'll give you some background on what this is for, for anyone watching who doesn't know. The Regional Improvement Commission is set up and mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia to determine how localities in southwest Virginia spend, uh, tax money from the casino, uh, that we receive. And all of the localities involved, and, and I can't name them off the top of my head, but they're all right around here, uh, appoint or represent it to this commission, and they determine how the money is spent in those localities. Um, we had received previously, uh, communication, I believe, from the county administrator in With County, who had kind of taken the lead on this and said, hey, let's go ahead and get this commission appointed. With County had recommended that we appoint, that, that any locality involved appoint the equivalent of their county administrator, which in this case would be our city manager. I felt like it might be prudent, though, for us to, to pull it out and, you know, either discuss it more in full here on whether we want, you know, there, there's no precedent, this is a brand-new board, so it's not, you know, it's not quote-unquote traditional to do one thing or the other. Whether we want to follow suit and, and appoint the city manager and just make that a city manager position in perpetuity, or if we want to make it a, you know, like the Chamber Commerce Board is, is the mayor, you know, or something like that. But I, I, I do think it warrants further discussion on who we appoint to this very important regional board. So I'm just, you know, I acted on my own, pulled this out, so that's, that's my thoughts.
Those are some good points, especially the point about when we appoint someone, how long is the appointment for? Is, you know, maybe, is it something we revisit after a year? Um, I guess my first thought is, um, because it has to do with additional tax money coming in from casino gaming and how localities spend that. If it's like the equivalent of our county administrator, um, our city manager, or someone like the CFO or finance department, someone who's really involved with the budget, who really understands, um, what the needs are, to be able to see that additional tax revenue. So, so I'm okay if, if it is someone like, like that on city staff, rather than someone who is on the council. But if it is a council member, I'm fine with that too, if that's the, the ultimate wishes of everyone. But, but maybe leaning more towards if it is someone who is more or less, um, tied to the budget regarding their position with the city, um, could be a benefit.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I, probably some clerk, I, I mean, I think, I was just going into this, probably table it for tonight, because there's questions for it, go either way. I mean, I'm all right with, uh, that is, uh, you pointed out, Mr. Osborne, it's all of the localities, cities and counties within the Bristol District, B dot. That, that's how I think the legislation. And so, you know, I don't know if this is to act like a regional commission, something like the, the Tobacco Commission or, or Go Virginia, that, you know, they look for regional-type projects throughout southwest Virginia. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent clear what, what their function is. And, and again, if, if all, you know, what are the other localities doing? And, and, you know, With, I think, took the lead, but, but if all the other localities are sending, uh, their county administrator, then, you know, that could follow suit, but as you point out, what's, what's the term? You know, I don't know, you know, is it something you, you would want to, you'd have to revisit? Because if we did point, we did like the chamber, it was the mayor, you know, then that would. that would be on us, how often? Or would it be something like you serve a two-year term, you rotate off? Or, I mean, there's just some things I'd want a little more clarification about the structure and what some of the others are doing. But I don't necessarily have, have any issue with, if it was Mr. Eads, or as you point out, maybe Ms. Bradlin, somebody that understands the finance as well, you know, helping to represent the city and, or, you know, like I know, we'll go Virginia is a lot of, it's mostly citizen-appointed, tobacco commissions, mostly, it's a mix between general assembly and citizen appointees. So, you know, I mean, what's, you may have some kind of mix here, some county administrators, some elected officials, some citizen appointees. I mean, I don't really know. I don't, this is so new, I don't know that they're doing. I mean, I think that the idea is to have this in place, because we know starting July eighth, this, they're going to start receiving revenues on that date. So eventually, it's going to funnel back to this group. And I think they're wanting to get everything in place. But I don't even think the legislation really clarified. It just said this group would administer those funds, and I think it left it at that.
And that was kind of my, you know, to be clear, I have full faith in, you know, in Mr. Eads' ability to carry out this position or Ms. Bradlin, although I think if we appoint her, she would key my car. Or whoever the mayor is, you know, their, their capability of doing this. But there are a whole bunch of questions, you know, this is, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, whoever can correct me. No other locality that's getting a casino has a regional improvement commission. It's just, it's just Bristol, because of the nature of how it will affect other localities, because we're sparsely populated compared to other places that are getting casinos. So, I mean, there are a whole lot of questions and no precedent for us to follow. So I would be fine, and I'll go ahead and make a motion, if no one else has any other discussion, to table this, to postpone this until the May twenty-fourth meeting, to give us, give us two weeks to, to figure out what we're doing.
I would agree with that, but I will say, where I work with a lot of communities, and especially all the, all of the localities that are part of this, and I will say, the probably five or six that I've heard from, they have appointed their county administrator to that, to that board. Some have had questions, should it be the, you know, the tourism director, the DMO for that area, or should it be someone else on staff, their CFO? So I do know for sure that some have appointed their county administrator to that.
I'm finding a second, Dad. I would just say, if Mr. Eads could get answers as best he can to the questions we had, then we could bring it back up.
So after that discussion, we do have a motion and a second to postpone it until the next meeting. Is there any other further council discussion?
Postpone it at the next meeting with the, the direction, if possible, to get as much information from everyone else as we can.
Yes. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.